So it is significant and seems like something that the council would definitely want to protect. So not only have we brought the issue forward, but we've brought along with it a solution, which I would imagine is somewhat unique in this case. We've got an expert, probably, maybe this is kind of maybe overstating, but maybe not, maybe the world's leading expert on this topic, who has agreed to help us at no charge. Because he's from South Carolina, he's a Clemson professor. That alone is probably worth eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. So we've brought that forward. We've organized all the key stakeholders. Fairfield County is a key stakeholder at Lake Waterie. You can't really define who the owner is. But we've got Chester County on board, we've got Lancaster on board, we've got Kershaw on board, State of South Carolina is doing a grant, Duke is on board. And now we're asking you all to be on board as well because you heard the numbers. We've got Kershaw all in at fifty, Lancaster, who has no property on the lake at fifty-five, Chester, no property on the lake at thirty. And now honestly, those counties are looking at Fairfield and seeing what you're going to do because they're not paying for the treatment in Fairfield. They're not going to do it. And so there's going to be a prioritization when this is over. And five thousand dollars is going to get the citizens of Fairfield County. And our part of the lake, which is significant, very little, is going to put us at the bottom. That's what's going to happen. So I'm asking you to think about that. In my estimate, thirty thousand dollars. I took a look at the amount of just the property tax. So I think Shirley and the other gentleman was looking at the total budget. If you just look at property tax, Waterie is twenty percent of all property taxes. Second is Monticello with Dominion. What we're asking for is one-half of one percent of that amount. That's almost nothing. I tried to do the math on five thousand dollars and there's so many decimals that I couldn't even tell you what percent of a percent that is. So we're asking you to get on board with all of us, not just the citizens out at Lake Waterie, but the other counties around and other stakeholders. Thank you.
Jim Lotruglio.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Jim Lotruglio, District Two. Forgive me for reading this. I'm also the past chairman of Lake Waterie Association. We thank you for your dedicated service and for addressing this critical issue in preserving Lake Waterie. Lake Waterie is a cornerstone of the community, supplying water to thousands, offering recreation for families, and driving economic growth through tourism, business attraction. The presentation by Mr. Wilks and Mr. Kelly to this council informed you that unchecked this algae treatment in the future could cost millions of dollars rather than hundreds of thousands as it would be current. Not to mention the loss of economic growth, quality of life for the citizens that use the lake. The risk also threatens jobs in the community, revenue, tax revenue, the lake's role as a regional asset for residents and businesses. As fiduciaries, you understand the importance of proactive investment to avoid significant costs later. I respectfully request thirty thousand dollars be funded for this initiative to help support the coalition of stakeholders. Together, we can protect our water supply, preserve economic vitality, and ensure the lake remains a vibrant resource for future generations. I urge you approve the thirty thousand year support to prevent millions in the future costs and demonstrate Fairfield County's commitment to sustainable growth and to the coalition at hand. Thank you for your leadership.
Randy Kelly.
I'm Randy Kelly. I live in District Two. I was one of, along with Rod Wilks, did the presentation back in March to open this subject up with council. I won't reiterate the points that have already been made tonight. I do want to share three quick things with you. One is just a quick update. I was at six of the seven access points for Lake Waterie that are in Fairfield County today. And I didn't go to Molly Creek, I didn't quite have time, but I wanted you to know that three of the six that I did have algae mats that are starting to come on real strong, just as predicted. If not directly in the area of the ramp, then they are in coves, they're very close by. Taylor Creek is kind of the leading indicator for the presence and the growth of algae on the lake. And it is inundated already. It's as bad as you see normally in the middle of the summertime. Colonel Creek, there's a cove immediately adjacent to the ramp where mats are very apparent now. And June Creek, when you drive across the bridge close to the ramp, you can look up in those headwater areas and see lots of mats floating up in there. So in those areas, I would say it's probably approaching what we would normally see in the middle of the summertime. So it's coming on strong, real strong. The second point I want to make is right in line with that. You might remember seeing this invasion curve, a chart that we showed back in March. And I know you can't see it all that well from where you are, but it simply says that there is a tipping point. If we get beyond that with the growth of this lingua, then instead of costing in the hundreds that we're asking for right now, we're going to be looking at cost in the millions. And it'll get to a point where we really won't be able to control it. We've seen examples of that in other lakes. And you can look at, again, as we mentioned, Lake Gaston up in North Carolina, and they've got that exact situation right now. Their budget for controlling, not eradicating, is about one point three million dollars. And we're headed that way pretty quickly right now. And so the time is now to do something about it and get it stopped and bring it under control. And the third point again is just to reiterate the requests that's been made. We need the thirty thousand dollars. We're lagging badly behind the rest of the counties, some of which don't even have a border on Lake Waterie. And we need to step up and go with the thirty. Thank you very much.
Thomas Fort.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas Fort. I'm the Chair of Lake Waterie Association. I want to thank you for listening to us this evening. We really appreciate it. I just want to cover a couple of points that have been shared with me or concerns that could potentially make this a little easier tonight. A couple of the concerns that were shared with me, either from this county or different counties, were concerning the funding for the algae treatment plan. The first question I have here was Duke owns the lake. Why don't they pay for more of it? Well, that's a very complicated question, to be honest with you. When the lake was built in the twenties, public recreation wasn't even a thought. It wasn't until the thirties that the concept of eminent domain and public recreation and incorporating that into those eminent domain projects became a concept. In the thirties, they began opening that up. And their responsibility is to provide that area to us for public recreation. That doesn't mean necessarily that they're required to take care of every dire need we have related to public recreation. During the relicensing process in the early two thousands, you know, they had all the stakeholders participate. And as part of that process, the counties, the utilities, the associations, back then it was WHOA in Fairfield County and Lake Waterie Association in Kershaw County, they all agreed and worked through the process. And I'm just going to give you a short part of it, but here's what we all agreed to in that contract. And this happens more when it's whether it's litter, issues across the lake on different topics, we run into this feeling of, well, Duke should pay for it. Well, the truth is, is they are a business and they have to look at it, you know, within the confines of a business and what the Public Utilities Commission will actually approve for them to pay for. But what we agreed to here, here's a short excerpt. "The licensee shall assist in the development and share in the funding of aquatic weed management strategies approved by appropriate state resource agencies, local government and local government, which shall include state aquatic weed management cost share programs sponsored by the North Carolina or South Carolina Department of Natural Resources." We all agreed to that. We all signed it if we participated. So, and it was our, if we did not participate, that was our choice. But that is the agreement we all are bound to here. So I think that's good to know. And back then, all they had was hydrola. And they probably only had, you know, and it says they'll take the last twenty years of the previous license, average that out on an annual basis, and adjust that for either inflation or deflation, and that will be their ongoing expense that they will contribute to that problem. All they had was hydrola back there for a few years before they came up with a solution, kind of like we are with algae now, where they only spent a couple thousand in a couple isolated years. So that average is relatively low. I'm going to stop right there. I'm not going to take up your time, but I will stay through the meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. There's a lot of complicated parts to this and I'd be happy to help you with it. Thank you.
Ann Correia.
Good evening, Ann Correia, District Two. I'm here to speak to the request of funds for algae, but I'm going to play devil's advocate and be the voice of reason. To ask to pay as much as Kershaw County is unreasonable, they have three-quarters of the shoreline, Kershaw County also secured a grant. I don't see any of our council doing the same to alleviate costs. That line in red is Kershaw County. Looking at their budget, they've pledged thirty thousand. This is a property assessment year and our taxes are going up. If council keeps spending, mark my words, the millage rate will be another increase. In researching and visiting the lab at Catawba River Keepers multiple times, one cannot eradicate the algae. They can only maintain. So this result will be continual spending. LWA met their goal of donations for a fireworks show weeks ago. And I was looking at it and it says in the paper, just a few days ago, they're still looking for money. The result will be, I don't know, are they still collecting money and where will it go? With funds available, they do not offer to match donations. Catawba River Keepers cannot guarantee that there will be no environmental side effects from treatment with chemicals to animals, plants, or humans. I would suggest tabling this to ensure our county is being financially responsible and that LWA puts some skin in the game. They have the funds. Direct our revenues towards much-needed practical concerns for the whole county, such as fire trucks, more essential employees for health and safety, safety improvements on our roads, sewage treatment, and fixing failing infrastructure. We are a county in dire straits when it comes to safety and health and budget. LWA has an Edward Jones account with over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from a lawsuit settlement, earmarked in the mission statement for the specific use of water quality. Let this organization step up and be the hero, not the taxpayers. Council, protect the taxpayers, be smart, know the facts. LWA had no problem raising money for stump removal and fireworks through social media. They have a yearly decrease in revenue from dues and are not attracting new members. As a result, they had to withdraw over twenty-two thousand from their investment account to balance their budget, which should be self-sustaining and is supposed to be used for water quality. If LWA can raise money from lake residents for fireworks, stump removal, let them for once contribute. Thank you for your time and please look out for us, the citizens, the taxpayers. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you everyone for your comments. Now we're down to item eight, public hearing. Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the rezoning classification from I-1 Industrial District to B-2 General Business District. Tax map number 107-03-05-001-000, located at 1496 U.S. Highway 321 North, Winsboro, South Carolina, 29180, owned by Sammy J. and Grace P. Coley. Note, the Fairfield County Planning Commission approved this rezone request.
This hearing is opened up at 6:42. Dr. Roberts, anyone signs?
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. The only questions here are, who's it going to benefit? Why are we doing it? And what are the long-term ramifications? And if the answer is prevented by NDA, let us know. But I wish we could start putting that kind of stuff in, not only ordinances, but anything that goes on the agenda, the who, what, when, where, why, for all of these, particularly who does it benefit, who does it hurt, and what are the potential ramifications? Thank you.
Anyone?
No, sir.
We close this portion at 6:43. Dr. Roberts, item B.
An ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Mega Meadow and other related matters.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
Just to reiterate, Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Again, I bring up, please give us the details. I understand this is a good program from everything that I've seen and it's a very wise move, but please convey to the citizens all the details. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Hearing is closed at 6:44. We're down now to item nine, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A is the second reading of ordinance, 8:45. Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to establish fees and service charges for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county-related funds, and to provide for certain fiscal matters and other matters related to county government.
Counsel, can I get a motion?
Sir?
Motion is second that we...
Mr. Chairman, members of council, tonight I present to you the second reading of the budget of this county. And I'm going to give you tonight an overview, summaries of where the money comes from, where it goes, breakdowns by departments, as well as key priorities and challenges that we have in front of us that we're taking into account as we looked at this. First thing I wish to go over is the priorities that this budget does. This budget will support our public safety, supports it through pay raises as well as vehicles and equipment. This budget will support economic development through investments in our wastewater treatment plant and sewer lines. It will support infrastructure with additional funding for roads and bridges. It will create a stable and secure long-term funding mechanism for our future, present and future capital needs. And it will support our current employees with a three percent pay raise. As we looked at this budget and prepared it, there were challenges we had to keep in front of us. One, of course, is the economy itself. Will we be facing a recession going forward? Others, federal aid, especially Medicaid, which funds a significant part of our budget through our transit and part of our, as well as EMS. What inflationary pressures will we deal with as costs continue to escalate? The cost of staffing and retention continues to be a struggle, and an aging infrastructure that we as a county have to deal with. So the budget presented tonight in the second reading is a budget of forty-one million, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. That's an increase over last year's budget of four-point-two-five percent. Again, we focus in this budget on our infrastructure improvements, creation of a capital replacement plan, public safety, economic development, and employee retention. Two critical things to remember about this budget. Number one, it requests and requires keeping our rollback millage in place, so no increase to that. And second, it requires the creation of a capital millage fund with the imposition of eight mills of taxes that would be not in the general fund, but going into a capital replacement fund that will allow us for the foreseeable future to meet and provide those necessary pieces of capital equipment, such as police cars, ambulances, fire trucks, and other vehicles that currently we do not have a way to pay for on a regular, routine basis. The sources of revenue, property taxes, as we know, are a significant part of it. Seventy-eight percent of our budget comes from property taxes. That includes not just homes, but cars, utilities, and industry. State and federal aid is eight-point-four percent, fees and permits, four percent, and other sources of revenue, about eight-point-eight percent. You look at the breakdown just visually, you can see the degree to which property taxes is part of our budget. As the years go on, it is my hope to work with this council to minimize the impact of just one source of revenue in our budget. You'll hear me speak of a stool. Right now, our stool has one leg. And a one-legged stool is not a very stable stool. So as time goes on, I hope to be able to increase some of those other line items and reduce our need for taxes to fund everything that we do. But for now, this is how this county operates and is funded, is through those property taxes. So the expenditures themselves, again, forty-one million, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Breaks down, public safety and judicial services, almost fifty percent of our budget, forty-five point eight percent goes to public safety and judicial services. Public Works, twelve-point-seven percent. Administration and Internal Service, twenty-one percent. And Community and Human Services, twenty percent. And again, the breakdown visually, just so you can see that public safety and judicial service is almost half of our budget. How did they break down? Well, the line items for those departments, you see, the sheriff's office, six-point-one million dollars to the sheriff's office, followed by EMS, four-point-six million, followed by the detention center at two-point-six, and fire at one-point-six. With the others of animal control, probate, clerk of court, family court, and you can read the various departments, for a total of nineteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars going towards public safety and judicial services. And the breakdown again in a visual format. Public Works. Public Works, largest part of solid waste, two-point-six million dollars going to solid waste. You recall, some meetings back, I started bringing up the important solid waste is to us and also the impact it has on our budget and the fact that solid waste is one of the most critical parts of what we do as a county in providing a service that every citizen takes advantage of, benefits, and uses. It's also one of the sources of expenditures that is going to have to be worked upon because the cost of solid waste removal and disposal goes up significantly every year. Building maintenance, maintaining our physical structures of the buildings, one-point-one million. Road maintenance, one-point-three million. The airport, one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, for a total of five-point-three million, into the various public works departments. And again, solid waste is almost half of our public works expenditures. Administration and Internal Service, eight-point-eight million. The largest part of that are general operations. Those are the costs of the county that can't be divided into a specific department. That's going to be our insurance, that's going to be our utilities, that's going to be those costs that are not able to be fixed into one single, retiree benefits, things like that. Finance, nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand. County Council, four-hundred-and-eighty. Our legal fees, three-hundred. The county administrator's budget, seven-forty-five. Human resources purchasing. IT is the largest, second largest, I should say, and a significant part of their costs, again, are the costs of leasing the various services. As you know, we really don't own our data anymore. Pretty much everything we do is in the cloud and those services we have to pay for. And again, the cost of that goes up on a regular basis. The cost of replacing the equipment, we do use our servers, our laptops, is also an escalating cost. So there, one-point-two million. And then vehicle services, the maintenance of the vehicles that we have in our fleet, for a total of eight-point-eight million dollars. And again, general operations is the single largest breakdown of that aspect of it. Then our community and human services departments. This is kind of a, maybe I could break it down into two areas, but these are the various departments of the county that service our citizens. So the other was internal, that serviced the county. This is external. Again, the largest part, the transfer out, those are the funds that in coming in, that we then transfer out into other line items of the county, those services that are received by the county and that we transfer funds into them. Recreation, one-point-two million. And then you can go down, economic development, community development, delinquent taxes, assessor, so on and so forth, down to about eight-point-five million dollars total for So let's break down expenditures a different way. Of the forty-one-point-nine million dollars, twenty-six-point-eight million of that goes to personnel costs. So more than half of our budget is personnel, people, about sixty percent. Our fixed costs, three-point-four million, that's going to be your insurance, your operating leases, utilities, and contingencies. Economic development expenses, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The capital expenses, which is lease purchase, this building, new vehicles, two-point-six-nine million. And then operating expenses as well of eight-point-seven. So when you look at the county's overall budget, when you take out personnel, you take out capital, of the forty-two million dollars, only eight-point-seven million is actually spent to operate this county. That's on your various utilities, your gasoline, your paper, your pens, the various costs related to operating the county. The vast majority of our expenditures, again, are people, human capital. And so that's the general fund of the county. So then we have our special revenue funds. What are special revenue funds? Special revenue funds, they include certain kinds of debt, grants, special projects, and capital improvements. They also include transfers of non-general fund budgets, such as our ATAX funds, our transit, and our Workforce Improvement Act funds. Eleven million dollars of the county's budget is special revenue. And again, breaking down, you can see the breakdown in public safety. Those are grants that are received. You see public works, roads, that would be the CTC, that would be the road funds that are generated from the road fee. Airport grant, again, solid waste grant. And then other, seven-point-seven million dollars of our special revenue funds. The breakdown with other, so what is other? So other funds are basically in the special revenue. It's going to be a number of things. Debt service is one-point-four million. Our vehicle replacement fund that I'm requesting is one-point-two million. Again, it's not part of the general fund, it's separate. The emergency room, even though we're no longer collecting the tax on the emergency room, we're still paying for that emergency room with money that was collected already and set aside. So it's not coming out of our general fund, but it is money that was collected when that tax was in effect. So we're still paying that emergency room, a million dollars here as well. Capital improvement fund, again, expenses that go into the actual building of buildings in this county, ATAX funds, et cetera. So the capital improvement projects that are included in this that I've talked about. Well, again, it's a critical part of this budget because it creates a capital replacement fund that we've never had before. It would dedicate millage that can only be spent on capital replacement projects. This year, that would be fourteen vehicles for public safety, an ambulance, fire apparatus. It would include paving the courthouse and judicial center parking lots, repairs and renovations to the animal shelter. It would finish the courthouse, it would include secure parking for judges, landscaping, and punchless items. It would also include the Winsboro Connector wastewater line as we continue to work on it, and it would start the design of the new wastewater treatment plant. Critical projects, each and every one of them. So what are our next steps? Well, tonight is second reading of the budget. After that, we'll have several weeks for it to be considered and discussed amongst yourselves with me. with me and staff and the public. Then a public hearing on June twenty-sixth with anticipated third reading as well. I would point out that that is a Thursday, that's a special meeting, not the normal Monday meeting. So that would allow us to have a meeting before that as well, with implementations budget starting July first of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Chairman, members of council, that's my presentation. Any questions that you have?
Any question, council?
I have a few. Mr. Carpenter, is that a, is that a three percent across the board for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second question I have is usually when we're doing the budget, we have the current budget, the year before budget, and the county administrator's recommendation. Can you do that for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. On the community and human services side, the outside agencies, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I did ask this question at the last budget workshop, and it was brought up again this evening by Mr. Bright. How do we get to know from the outside agencies what percentage of that funding that they get overall, not just from the county, actually goes directly to the services that that agency is providing?
Yes, sir. If we go back to the county in the past and not request that information, what would be my intention is to reach out to all recipients and ask if they provide that to us, and that we'd use that as the basis going forward of whether that's an agency that this county feels is worthy of our support.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when you asked us what our priorities were, and one of the things I thought when it comes to these outside agencies, if they align with, you know, our top priorities, public health and safety, public safety and health, whatever order you put them, if they align with that, I would say that they should be given, you know, more consideration, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roe.
Yeah, and I think I spoke with Mr. Carpenter after our last meeting about outside agencies, and it's been, we've brought it up before, and it's always hard to cut something out that you put in, but I think that's, and he said that he would look at it, he's just not been here long, we can look at it in the next year's budget at seeing how effective and how we relate to all of these, and are we duplicating, and different things like that, just to be sure we're doing right. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Okay, council, you've heard the motion, second, and you've heard the administrator's report. Are you prepared to vote? Any question? All in favor? Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Item B, Dr. Roberts.
This is a title only. An ordinance by Fairfield County Council enacting and establishing business license for Fairfield County, amending Chapter Eight Business of the Fairfield County Code of Ordinances to add Article Three Business License and Other Matters Related There Too.
Again, this is title only. Can I get a motion?
Someone.
All in favor? Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Item seven, first reading, title only, ordinance eight forty-eight, Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance by Fairfield County Council enacting and establishing a special property tax assessment program for rehabilitated historic properties, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Winsboro regarding the special property tax assessment program for rehabilitated historic properties, adding Chapter Seven Special Property Tax Assessment Program for Rehabilitated Historic Properties to the Fairfield County Code of Ordinances and Other Matters Related There Too.
Again, item C is title only. Are you prepared to vote? I need a motion, I apologize. I need a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All right, all in favor? Let the record show. Item D, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash six, Dr. Roberts.
A resolution by Fairfield County Council requesting the South Carolina Department of Transportation post no-through truck signs on Center Creek Road.
Motion and second. Any question?
Mr. Gilbert, if I can just, if I can just comment on this. This is in my district and received a lot of calls from citizens there that the big heavy trucks were tearing up the road. Received a lot of pictures. DOT was contacted, went out there, repaired the road. Within two weeks, I received more pictures that the road was torn up, kind of inoperable with the drive on, and I contacted Mr. Carpenter, and I don't know if Mr. Carpenter wants to say a few things, but the heavy trucks were just tearing up the roads, and it was making it unsafe for all the residents that was traveling down Center Creek Road.
Mr. Pauling, members of council, the majority of those trucks were coming from the Luck Quarry headed towards the construction site at Scout. Reached out to Luck, and Luck can ask them not to use this road, but they have no control over them because they're not Luck trucks, so it's the individual trucking companies themselves. State DOT is used to these kinds of requests. We have to go through this process of formally requesting it from them upon our formal request, and the signs will be erected, and then that can give the sheriff and all the ability to go in and enforce traffic laws.
Okay, it's been motion and second. Oh, Mr. Roe.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, second, I had a number of calls, people come to the store commenting on the same issue for the last year, so yeah, I think that's definitely needed.
Anyone else? Okay, it's been motion and second. Are you prepared to vote? Any question? All in favor? Let the record show seven. Board and commission minute nun. Board and commission appointments. Board of zoning appeal, Mr. Sarah Bryant, District Six, representing District Seven. Are you prepared to, can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Are you, any question? Prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Thank you. Old business, Fairfield Ford, MOU.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you know, Fairfield Ford is an organization the county has been part of that received a grant some years ago that it has been operating off of. As they are starting to wind down the grant, they're still in operation, they've asked to renew the lease that we currently have with them with no changes to terms to allow them to continue to have an office in the building they call the Teachridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was added to the agenda in response to many citizen concerns about several council members not being on standing committees. So what I, I will make a motion here, and basically what it does is it adds some new requirement to our bylaws when it comes to standing committee appointments. And so I'll just get right to it. So I move to amend paragraph seven C in our bylaws to state, quote, "The chair of county council shall appoint the members and the chairs of the following standing committees no later than the first regular meeting in February each year." And that's the current wording, by the way. This is the new wording. Every member of council shall be appointed to a position on two standing committees, and the chair of county council shall make every effort to appoint council members to the standing committees of their choice. If a council member does not wish to be on a standing committee, then that position will be offered to another council member, end quote. End of motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, been motion and second. Based on Mr. Gobach's amendment. Any question?
Have a comment.
Comment.
Counsel, my constituents have been feeling disappointed and left out. As you well know, I was not appointed to a standing committee, and with all of you that we should be serving our constituents equally unless we choose not to. All council persons should have an equal opportunity to serve, and so let's get back to doing what works and show fairness. We would be headed in the right direction with the approval of this motion.
Okay, you heard the comments. All in favor?
Yep.
Oh, chair, Mr. Carpenter?
If I could just make a point. Generally speaking, in terms of bylaws, they are from a point going forward, so this would not result in
Right.
...receding the committees in and of themselves. Mr. Morgan, if you want to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, that's typically the way it works. If you make a motion to these bylaws, it applies prospectively in the future, meaning the next time that the appointments would take place, then that would be when the council, if should it take and approve this language, have the committee structure be in that way. So in other words, if it's passed this evening, unless there's another change or language to the motion, it doesn't change the currently standing committees, it only applies to the future committees. I just want everybody to be clear about that.
Any other comment? All in favor? Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Item fourteen, I am thirteen, new business nun. Item fourteen, county administrator report. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I bring to you tonight two items. One, title industrial park. The county owns approximately sixty acres of land, a Peachtree Road, that we have acquired for the purpose of a future industrial park. However, it is not zoned industrial. So my request to the council tonight is permission to start a process of rezoning that land so that it is, in fact, industrial. When we are working with a business looking to come to this county, that's one of the key things that is critical, is is your land able to host an industry? And right now, we would have to say no, we'll work on it. So this is one of those quiver, one of those arrows in the quiver we don't have on our properties. So my request is that the council would authorize me to start the process. That means we would become the petitioner, we'd go in front of the planning commission, go through the process of rezoning, then it would come to the council at some point in the future.
Okay, you heard the administrator's report. Can we get a motion on it?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Any question? All in favor? Opposes? Let the record show seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as we've heard tonight, there is a very interest in the issue of algae and lake watery. The budget that I presented includes five thousand dollars for, for that effort. My logic in building the budget and still is that Fairfield County is the least of the entities that shares lake watery. We do not have any water intake from that lake. We do not use it for the discharge of wastewater as well. Other entities, other counties, other municipalities, the lake is very critical to them. So I included five thousand dollars in my budget, which I think is a reasonable amount for the amount of frontage that we have on the lake and the amount of impact that the lake has on what we actually use it for. So I know it has been brought to attention to the council, that be changed, but my recommendation of my budget is five thousand dollars, and that's what it still is. Council can authorize me to do something different, so I bring it to you tonight.
Okay, Mr. Gobach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Carpenter and I have agreed to disagree on this point. The five thousand dollars that was recommended, the logic, in my opinion, the algae does not care how many properties are on, you know, a county side versus the other county side. The algae is very aggressive, and I know for a fact, we have many coves on the Fairfield side that are impacted by this algae. And if we've, you know, it could, it could well be that if we fail to fund this at a level that's commensurate with the other counties and the other entities, that the decision might be made to just bypass the Fairfield County side of the lake, and that's a big concern, I think, of everybody here. I would like to thank all the citizens that spoke tonight, but if I could see just a show of hands, everybody in the audience who is here because of the lake watery algae, so it's, you know, the vast majority of the people here tonight. Also, how many, a lot of people who live on the lake volunteered through the efforts of LWA, Lake Water Association, to actually go out and sample algae in different locations. How many of you actually did that? Okay, so there was a point made about, you know, why isn't LWA paying for all of this? Well, the, as was mentioned by Mr. Fort, we have secured the, well, not we, but the LWA has secured the services. I'm a member of LWA, so that's why I said we. Have secured the services of Dr. John Rogers, a Clemson retired professor, and as he mentioned, that could be worth at least eighty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars worth of consulting, is the leading expert probably in the country. The other part that Lake Water Association has already spent money on is fifteen thousand dollars, approximately fifteen thousand, for USC technical folks to sample and analyze the water to be able to decide which treatment, to support Dr. Rogers and determine the treatment that might be most beneficial for this type of algae in this location. There were other numbers mentioned tonight, so I want to go through some things to try to, and I will make a motion for, as requested, for thirty thousand dollars from our general fund from this current budget. But there are some numbers that I think hopefully shed some light on how important this lake is and Fairfield County's contribution. The, the property tax was mentioned as eleven percent. I spoke with our auditor this morning, and actually she gave me numbers that I trust. And the residential property tax, not including VC Summer, was twenty-two million dollars, and of that, the lake watery properties contributed six point six million, so that's thirty percent of the total residential property tax. In addition to that, we collect the boat motor tax. I'm sure most of that, if not all of it, comes from lake watery, and that's two hundred thousand dollars. Also, tourism. We collect accommodations tax from all the short-term rentals on lake watery. And lake watery, Fairfield County, information I received from Mr. Toledo in our community development department, there are sixty-one rental units within Fairfield County. Fifty-three of those are on lake watery. So the vast majority of the accommodations tax that we generate is from people coming to stay on the lake. And if the algae takes over that portion of it, then people will not want to come anymore. So if you, if you kind of backtrack and make some assumptions, some conservative, I'm not being real optimistic with my assumptions, from the revenue that we've generated from the accommodations tax, so far this year, we're talking over two thousand nights of rents, of rentals on lake watery. And then we haven't even hit the peak season yet, so over two thousand nights already, which again generates the accommodations tax. As was mentioned, Lancaster County is where the folks are working to secure a total of fifty-five thousand from Lancaster County from various entities, thirty thousand from Chester, and neither of those counties have any properties on lake watery. And Kershaw County, fifty thousand. Also, Duke has a habitat enhancement program, and we will be submitting, or LWA, apologize for that, LWA will be submitting a grant for fifty thousand dollars for that. So it's, to me, it's very important, it's a very, it's a tourist attraction, it's a key asset for Fairfield County, and I do believe that, you know, thirty thousand dollars to protect that asset is very, very important. I will mention, since it was brought up, about five thousand dollars recommended. It was also recommended to spend eighty-five thousand dollars repaving tennis courts and pickleball courts. I know there's some real avid pickleball fans out here, and I don't oppose repaving those surfaces, but eighty-five thousand dollars for tennis and pickleball courts, you know, how much tax revenue does that generate from tourism? Probably not much. Lake water would generate a lot more tourism for money spent. So with all that being said, the motion is that I move to fund the lake watery algae treatment program in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and for the funds to be taken from the current year's general fund. year's general fund, specifically the contingency line item. End of the motion.
Does, does this come from the ATAX?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I second it. Does this not come from the ATAX rather than the general fund?
What's that?
What? Oh, sorry.
We've had a motion and a second. Yeah, I'm gonna give her a chance to speak.
Can I talk now? Does this not come, does this come from the ATAX or no?
The request would not come from ATAX. The request would come out of the current budget that we're finishing up, so we have another three weeks of the current budget. We don't have this as a line item in the current budget, so it would come from the county's contingency fund, and then, my assumption is the council would then look for next year's budget to change that so that it would come from ATAX funds in the future, if the council changes to support this.
So now it would come from ATAX.
But currently, this would not come out of ATAX, no ma'am.
It can't come out of ATAX?
Not, well, we don't have it allocated, per se, so to fund something we haven't allocated, we would have to amend the budget, and so the request being made is much simpler than amending the budget with three weeks left to go.
Okay, I was just asking.
Mr. Roof?
Yeah, and I've learned a lot here tonight, but, and lake water is a valuable asset to Fairfield County. I like, I really like going with our administrator, but I really feel like I need some more time on this, so I would like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second that we table this until our next meeting. Any question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what is the purpose of tabling, and what additional information would help us make a decision?
Just for me, I need to soak this in a little bit. I've learned, I mean, I've learned quite a lot here tonight. I just need a little more time to think about it, and so I think it would be advantageous.
I would, if I may, I'm sorry.
A lot of information was put out here, and there was a lot of information, prior information that we had when we came here from the various parties and the various entities involved, but I'm still not convinced either way. Our last, not calling a name, our last presenter presented some new information that I want to consider, that I want to get a little bit more understanding on, because when you have a situation that is contradictory points of view, how can one make a decision? How can one make an informed decision? So being the person I am, I want to look at both sides again, particularly the side that was not prevented earlier. Thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Bill and Mr. Roof. Over the last month, I've done a lot of research on this issue, also spoke with individuals at Duke Power, and there is some inconsistencies on this matter, so I'm not prepared to vote as well. It would move to go forward with tabling it.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, all in favor of tabling this? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Let the record show five, two. Okay, now we're down to clerk of council time, none. Down to council, county council time. Anyone wish to speak?
Yes, following up on the lake watery issue, I will reach out to each of the council members, my fellow council members here, to find out exactly what information you need, what the inconsistencies you see are, so that we can get the answers to those as quickly as possible and move this forward. See, the shame is that the sooner you start the treatment, the more effective it is, and you've seen several times this death cycle, I'll call it. The longer you wait, the worse it gets, and the less recovery there can be. So I have to say I'm extremely disappointed with the decision this evening, but I will reach out individually to all of y'all to make sure I understand what all of the concerns are, and I would ask you to bring out all of your concerns so that they can be answered with data and facts and, you know, take all the motion out of it, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? All right, we're moving on down, second session, none. Next is, can I get a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. This, meeting is adjourned.